Middlebury Planning Commission Public Hearing on some zoning changes, zoning and subdivision bylaw amendments, and some town plan readoption. This is, we're doing this, it's something that we have to do every five years, and after this year will be every eight years for the town plan, but I'll explain that in a minute. Before we start, I'm wondering if I could add an agenda item, two agenda items actually. One agenda item is to discuss and vote on any changes that we hear tonight, right after the meeting, so if someone could add, want to move that to add that on?
I'll move to add discussion and voting on any changes.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. So, any discussion on that, any other discussion on that? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
And I'd say you'll vote on them if you can.
Yes.
If the discussion takes too long, then you'll meet again, but...
Yeah.
Okay. All right. And then, if there is time, we also, a quick update on municipal planning grant. If we could add that under other business, is that all right?
Yep.
So, is there any objection with that? If we have time, we're going to move this however fast we can. We have a public comment section, but, and, but I think we will be having enough public comment unless there's something not concerning these two items. Hearing none, okay. And do, we won't approve the minutes tonight.
Nope.
For that, okay. So, the planning commission was, we were brought some zoning and subdivision changes or amendments that we, that they would like to, we would like to consider, that were brought to us because of things that the DRB had found were inconsistent, made things difficult to approve things, there were some common sense things, there were some definitions that we thought really needed updating. This is by no means dealing with the whole zoning package. These are just a few little sub, well, they're not little, they're obviously important, but subdivision and zoning bylaws, I think there are probably 12 of them? Are there 12?
They didn't take account.
Why didn't you count, 13? Nope, there are more than that, but there's, but most of them are very straightforward. There are copies of the synopsis on this table if people don't have them and would like them. Judy, you might want one there. We're going to go through them piece by piece. Jen's going to just quickly explain what they are. If you have questions or suggestions, please speak up. There are no changes at all on the zoning map. We haven't done anything like that at all, so that is a major change, and that is not part of this at all. So, did, would you want to start with the?
Yep, I guess I would just add a couple of things to that. One is that the full redline version of all the changes made to the zoning regulations is available on the town website, so that's available online, townofmiddlebury.org. You can just follow the links to that, or you can call the planning office if you need any more information on where to find those changes. And then, as far as, you know, like if you have a question, just jump in. I think I would rather wait, I think I'd rather wait and take comments all at once after we've presented a particular section, maybe?
Okay.
Do you want to take them section by section?
That's fine.
Okay. So, do you want me to just go through the changes?
Yes, please.
Okay. So, this is the planning commission report. The planning commission's required to create a report under state law that just sort of summarizes what the changes are to the zoning. So, I'm just going to use that report as the template for explaining these changes to you. The first change is, we're to the definitions section. As Nancy explained, these are just sort of patch, just patches to get us through, things that are kind of broken in the zoning, or things that have given trouble to the zoning administrator or the DRB recently. And since there are public hearings taking place for the town plan anyway, we thought we would just try to parallel track some, some quick fixes to the zoning too, for things that give us trouble on a regular basis. And so, there are several definitions that have kind of given us, given us pause. I'm going to follow this way. So, we had to do slight technical wording changes to bed and breakfast house, camp, constructed wetland, discontinued use, and nursery garden center. It didn't really change their original meaning or intent. We slightly modified the definition of inn, because it was sort of an all-inclusive definition, so we made the definition of inn just a little bit briefer, and added new definitions for guest house, hotel, and motel. So, hotel and motel weren't in there, added for obvious reasons. And then, guest house was not in there at all, and sometimes we get inquiries about guest houses, you know, people who want to add this, this temporary facility for lodging friends and family on their property. So, those are the definitions. Any comments on those?
Hi. My name's Bill Townsend with JP Carrera and Sons, and appreciate the opportunity to participate in the process here. My only concern with the definitions was that in, 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 the definition of inn included hotel and motel, so when you eliminate hotel and motel from the definition of inn and create separate definitions for hotel and motel, you end up excluding hotels and motels from the districts as allowable uses, either permitted, or I think they're all conditional, that otherwise would have been there. So, for example, there's four districts that currently allow an inn as a conditional use. An inn includes a motel or a hotel. But now that definition changes, it seems to me that hotels and motels should be added as conditional uses in addition to ins in those four districts, which are?
Central.
BRC.
Protected highway.
Central Business District, Institutional District, and the Protected Highway District. And then, just as a supplement to that, I'd ask if you would consider adding hotel to the General Commercial District, given that it appears to be a, at least to me, a use consistent with the other allowable uses, all conditional, as well as consistent with sort of the nature of that district relative to the other districts where it's allowable. Hope that makes sense.
Absolutely, good catch, thank you.
Yeah.
Yep. So, Section 510. Kathy, did you have a comment on the definitions?
Yeah.
Yes.
Question. For guest house, it said, what shall be subject to dimensional requirements for which it is located?
Do you want to know what dimensional requirements are?
Yeah.
It's that list that you and I are so familiar with, with setbacks and things like that. Kathy's at a lot of DRB hearings as though.
I know. I remember.
So, moving on to Section 510, what requires a permit? The list of permit exemptions was included to update, include an exemption for house shares and room rentals for two or fewer rooms. This was to assist with housing affordability and to promote aging in place. I mean, if you buy a house and you want to do Airbnb or something like that, that, that is now exempt from a permit. It wasn't really covered by our zoning before, and I got the inquiry a lot, so now we know what to do with something like that. Section 520, application and administrative review process. We just added language to clarify the existing process and procedures for review of administrative applications. 540, conditional review process. We clarified the procedure for reviewing resumed discontinued uses and granting DRB hearing exemptions. So, we didn't have any sort of time limit on what we were calling a discontinued use. That's all clear now. And if you have a discontinued use, I think, I think we chose one year, and then you resume that use, you would just have to go back in front of the DRB, which is how I'm enforcing it now anyway, but that just formalizes the process. It only makes sense, because things could have changed in that period of time. And then, for granting DRB hearing exemptions, it just clarifies what things would be exempt from, from a hearing. Flat recording requirements, 560.
Sorry.
Sorry, Bill, yeah.
Were you just going over number four, Section 540, conditional review process?
Yes.
Yeah, so, I just had one, I guess, question about, on that one. And I recognize that some of the things, comments I'll be making seem pretty nitpicky, but, so, take that one for whatever it's worth. But on, on page 31, which I guess is paragraph C, right before Roman numeral 2, the, the language that was added in there, I think was intended, you know, to provide some guidance on what might qualify as a project or an application that can be considered, that could be considered minor. And, you know, so while I appreciate the intent behind that, my concern is that there, you know, it's pretty limited in saying that projects that may be minor in nature include setback waivers for blah, 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 blah. My concern is that someone can interpret that to then preclude what would otherwise be minor applications, you know, for like a change of use that I know in the past have been considered minor, in some cases, in administratively processed without having to go to a DRB hearing. So, it's sort of a question is, what's, is it really necessary to provide that example in there, and if so, does that preclude other things from being considered minors?
Okay, I think that's a good, that's a good comment. I'd rather, I'd rather discuss that as a group after the hearing, so I made a note, if that's okay?
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, good.
Excuse me, do you mean like after you go through all these, as opposed to write one by one?
I mean, there's the new agenda item that we added. I mean, that's, that's a good comment. It's going to require some consideration and conversation by the planning commission, so I don't want to discuss it in real time during the hearing.
Okay.
But I think it's something you guys need to discuss tonight, before you pass the regs on to the select board.
Okay, so we're clear as far as the agenda item, adding that?
Yep, and so I'll say that one more time. These regs are going to get approved hopefully tonight, and then passed on to the select board. So, that's something we need to discuss in that conversational period, hopefully tonight. So, 564, flat recording requirements. That section has just been revised, because I'm constantly giving verbal instructions to surveyors on best practices for preparing the final Milar, and now it's going to be all in there, so that when they're going through our regulations, they can see the rules written, and I don't need to explain it to them. So, it just clarifies all of that. Section 620, that's the, the table of dimensional requirements that Kathy was talking about before. So, what that, what this change does is it revises the side setback in the Central Business District from zero feet to five feet, but you can still reduce it to zero feet through the setback waiver process, which involves notification of a butters. So, the idea is, in the downtown Central Business District, you are allowed a zero-foot setback, but now I'm just saying, let's ask for permission for zero feet from the DRB. You can have five feet by right, but let's make it zero feet from the DRB, because that allows me to notify a butters that this is happening. Because if you had a building and somebody was building zero feet from you, you definitely want to know about it. So, that just creates a mechanism through our normal hearing warning process, so that I don't have to remember to call somebody and let them know. That's awkward, right? So, it just includes it as a DRB hearing, because a zero-foot setback is, is really tight. And there could be fire considerations, et cetera. Comment on that?
Yeah. In the, in the revision, I noticed you called it proof of a conversation would be a butter?
Yeah.
Just curious if that could be made a little bit more clear, what constitutes a conversation?
Mm-hmm. Or removed entirely, because the DRB warning process already sends in a butters letter.
Yeah, some kind of a, just, just to make it clear that a conversation is a written notice delivered to the butter, or something to the discretion of the board, but...
Okay, so let's talk about that again tonight, too.
Yep, got it. That's easy.
Lots without frontage. Section 705 just clarifies the, the language indicating that a maximum of three lots without frontage may be served with, by a private driveway or right-of-way. And that's not new, that just clarifies what we already had. Setback waivers, Section 724. We revised the section to correct the list of zoning districts where setback waivers are allowed. It, it just looked to be, it just looked to be a typo, so, so now the, the list has all the right zoning districts listed in it. We also revised the zoning language to allow this minimum setback waiver of zero feet in the CBD. So, if we're going to agree to allow a zero-foot setback waiver in Section 620, we just have to correct it in the setback waiver section as well. Accessory apartment units, seven, Section 736. So, this is one change that we're particularly proud of in an attempt to increase the supply of affordable housing in town. We've responded to the feedback that we've gotten from citizens, you know, in the two years that I've been here, to increase the minimum square footage of an accessory apartment unit. So, right now, it's 400, maybe 410 square feet, or 30% of the total habitable floor area of the primary dwelling, whichever is larger, we're increasing it to 850 square feet. Kathy?
In this, this thing that you gave us, this summary, it says, the maximum permissible floor area of the accessory apartments was increased. Maximum. Is there a minimum?
No.
There's no minimum for it?
There isn't, I think there is a minimum in state statute, but it's like closet minimum. Yep. And I guess technically that's not right, because the maximum still could be more than 850 if you had a really large primary structure. So, you've actually caught a typo inadvertently, and I should correct that. Matt?
So, I had two comments, and it sounds like one of them was a typo. Yeah, if you have a 3,000 square foot house, does that mean it's an 1,000 square foot accessory dwelling unit? And the other comment I'd like the board to consider, or the commission, sorry, is to actually increase that square footage to 950 or 1,000, which is, I, I think, more appropriate to a two-bedroom unit, which is what I believe the board or the commission envisioned. So, just something for, for you all to talk about.
So, Section 742, dwellings in the forest zone. This section in the regulations will need more work down the line, but this just helps us limp by for now. It was confusing, oh, I'm sorry. Going back to accessory apartment units, we also clarified that the owner can live in either the house or the accessory unit, and we also clarified that you can have a newly constructed structure on your property that wasn't clear before. So, the forest zone still needs a little bit of work, but we just clarified the section by allowing DRB discretion in conserving forest resources.
Hold on one sec, I think there's a question on the last item again.
Sorry.
One of the questions I have regarding the accessory dwelling units, the apartments, and, and, I'm sorry, I was a couple minutes late, so this has been talked about, so I can catch up with you afterwards. But the difference between an accessory dwelling unit and a guest house? So, in the, the way it's written, if we assume that an accessory dwelling unit is limited to 850 square feet, does that automatically presume that any accessory dwelling unit over 850 square feet becomes a guest house?
Matt, a guest house is, is for family or friends to use. It's not, it's not a paid thing. An accessory apartment is actually a unit that somebody would lease.
So, you're leasing it, or you're Airbnb-ing it, or whatever?
Am I?
Is that the distinction?
I wouldn't answer the question that way. Yeah, I just, I paused, because I was really trying to think through what you're, I'm trying to put myself in Matt's shoes, coming to me and asking me this question.
Okay.
So, if I'm Matt, what I want to know is, if I want an accessory apartment, and it's more than 850 square feet, do I automatically get bumped into this category of having to apply for a guest house?
Guest house?
And the answer is yes.
And not being allowed to?
Possibly, then you're going to fall under the den, the density requirements.
So, so the guest house is a way of adding space that's larger than an accessory dwelling unit to accommodate seasonal, you know, family or friends who are guests? But if that guest house were to be used in a lease or Airbnb function, it would fall under a conditional use or otherwise, whatever the governing zone is for density, meaning the, the number of dwelling? It would basically be an additional dwelling unit, not an accessory dwelling unit?
If, if you had a guest house and you started collecting rent, it would no longer be classified as a guest house. It would be classified as a, another dwelling unit.
Another dwelling unit.
Yep. And both guest house and dwelling units are subject to the dimensional requirements. The only way to skirt the dimensional requirements is to do accessory apartment. And then, the accessory apartment has restrictions, like you have to live there, you know, on the site, and you, and you have to fall under the square footage rule, and things like that. Kathy?
How do you skirt the dimensional requirements with a, an accessory apartment?
So, maybe skirt was, was a?
Or, what did you mean?
The wrong term to use? What I mean is that if you apply for an accessory apartment, you don't need to worry about the dimensional requirements. Said another way.
Like setbacks?
No, no, now I'm talking about density requirements, sorry. So, if you want an accessory apartment, you don't, I don't have to do that calculation with you in terms of what's your total acreage, and how many dwelling units do you have on the site? Yep. Thanks.
And then, my last follow-up for consideration, I'm sorry, is what the enforcement mechanism is on guest house versus accessory dwelling unit. I appreciate where you're coming from and what you're trying to achieve with it, but I'm worried that it will be a difficult thing to enforce, in the same way that the unrelated, more than, what is it, three unrelated people in a dwelling is difficult to enforce? And I'd just like the board to consider that.
Thanks for looking out for me. That could get awkward knocking on doors in between. So, where were we? Dwellings in the forest zone, right?
Forest zone.
Yep, okay. So, yep, the DRB recently reviewed a proposal for the forest zone, and just wished that the rules were more clear in terms of, in terms of the, like, that they can, they can ask people not to clear a lot of trees, that they have discretion in conserving forest resources when approving the construction of dwellings in the forest zone, that they have the ability to enforce clearing limits, enforce management plans, and stormwater management, and erosion control measures in sensitive forest areas. All of these were powers given to them under the existing zoning, but it was, it was just not as clear. So, it just makes the language more forceful, so that they feel more empowered to do these things, and so that it's clear to developers who are interested in the forest zone. So, landscaping and screening, Section 766. I'm just going to briefly summarize this. Again, on, online are the, the full edits we made to this section, but basically, the landscaping and screening section was really small, and so we just added more language to it, to describe what we mean by screened buffers, and try to give some, try to give some width for, for islands in parking lots, and how many trees should be in those islands. And we're just going to give it a try for a year and see how it works, but I think that it's going to be actually well-received by developers, because, you know, with the recent tractor supply application, I got a lot of questions of, what is really required of me? I'll do what you want, it's not a problem, I've got a budget for this project, but make it clear, and don't surprise me after the fact. So, this is where we, we're trying to get a little more prescriptive in our regulations to make things easier in general. But Bill, I know you had some comments on this section.
Yeah.
Okay.
Ready for this?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, starting with Roman numeral three on page 133, there is a, a requirement that finished site contours shall depart only minimally, minimally, from the character of the natural site and surrounding features. And I can understand the motivation behind that, but it seemed to me to be a little bit too, worded too strongly in that it seemed like a mandate, and specifically in the sense that it actually could conflict with other landscaping objectives, that there might be like, you know, berms or something like that. And so, I'd wondered, I suggested a simple wording change, which, which you have in the email saying, you know, which is just to preface that with, within reason, within reason, site contours should depart only minimally instead of shall depart. The next one, next one is on page 135, and it's Roman numeral five, shade and shade, shade and shade trees. Paragraph A, all redevelopment projects for uses abutting of public way shall be required to provide street trees along existing road frontages. My concern there is the undefined nature of redevelopment. I mean, I guess we all sort of know what redevelopment is, but I think it can be of varying scope and scale, and therefore, it, there seems that, you know, some fairly minor redevelopment projects could be subject to a pretty excessive burden if it's being mandated that they, you know, street trees now need to be installed along with whatever that minor improvement was being done, that's what you call a redevelopment. And then, the last was just sort of a question concern as to why a redevelopment project would include a change of use that is accompanied by a change of ownership. I mean, specifically, a change of use application that could be literally no external changes to the property at all, and even minor, no internal changes to the property. So, again, it seems like a sort of a fairly excessive burden to potentially be placing on some projects by mandating that just because they get a change of use and ownership changed hands that they have to undertake this landscaping project. And then, sorry, one more on this section, and that's on page 136, which is Roman numeral eight, A2. And it says, the proposed language is, final choice of tree species and exact planting locations are subject to recommendations of the Middlebury Tree Warden. I certainly understand why the Tree Warden may need to be consulted on some of these things. Again, I felt that this was too, too mandatory in that, you know, literally, the Middlebury Tree Warden, you know, sort of had unilateral authority to dictate to the DRB what trees need to be planted or where they need to go.
Yeah, that wasn't really the intent, so let's, let's fix that wording.
Yeah, and I, and I propose some alternative wording that you can, you know, consider or dismiss, but just essentially it says, you know, DRB may require that the choice of tree species and exact planting locations conform to the recommendations of the Middlebury Tree Warden.
That's really helpful. It's good to run it through the filter of someone who does things from the other direction. That's really helpful. Do you have a question, too?
A comment?
I don't really want you to comment directly to other people in the audience, but did you have a comment for me in, in the planning commission? You know how like the DRB is, how we don't let people talk to each other, so it doesn't get weird? Yeah, yeah, just to make a comment to this board, because they're going to decide on those things. I should have read the rules of procedure at the beginning.
Sorry. So, as far as redevelopment and the issue with trees, the fewer trees you have, whether it's some small-scale development or redevelopment, or a larger-scale development or redevelopment, are an incredibly important component of the process, the development process. And to whatever degree is possible, I think that requires a mandate. So, am I, am I okay?
I need to ask for clarification, but I, I feel bad, because I'm like running Nancy's meeting for her.
Now, this is okay for this part?
You're okay with this, though? Okay, just let me, if you're tired of me. What do you mean, the fewer trees, the fewer? I lost you at the beginning with the fewer trees part, can you say that again?
So, and the only thing I can use right this minute as an example is the, and is it considered development, redevelopment, expansion, whatever, at the poll-up? And the fact that that expansion occurred without the inclusion of islands for plantings and for trees, which myself and the Middlebury Tree Committee find problematic. So, that's one.
So, you're saying a project like that should be captured by our definition of redevelopment? When we decide what to call redevelopment, it should capture a project like that, for example?
I guess.
Is that what I'm hearing, okay?
Sorry, I, I... Sorry, I, I don't quite get all the terminology, but, and the best I can do is provide an attempt.
Well, we're making up terminology now. We're trying to decide what redevelopment means, so you're, it's blank slate.
So I think that would be, yeah, redevelopment is, I mean, it's certainly not new development, but that that needs to be considered. And likewise, and I think it's in here somewhere, that the amount of, um, impervious surface that you include in your development, redevelopment is considered, because we understand at this point that that's not the best thing for, you know, our water waste and water quality and so on. So that was, that was one. But the other piece about the, um, you know, restrictions as far as trees are concerned, you know, what, you know, what the plantings are, there are trees that are designed to be here, there are trees that are designed to be in certain locations, um, you know, we're aware of the fact that, you know, the best place to plant trees is not between the sidewalk and the...
Excuse me, I'm sorry, Judy.
Sorry.
No, no, I, I think, I, can you get to your point?
So I feel that it's important to have those...
Okay.
...guidelines, those restrictions, those, whatever. And unless you can provide a clear reason why you can't follow those guidelines, that they need to be followed.
Got it. So, um, so the Tree Committee submitted some, um, some comments before your hearing, so I'm just entering those into the, the record, I'm entering those into the hearing record now, so that you can look at those tonight, too. Um, do you have any comments to add over and above the Tree Committee comments that, that your committee worked on?
Well, I think it's just important to note that the Tree Committee in isolation did not make those recommendations.
Uh-huh.
It's with, it's with recommendations from, you know, people at UVM and, you know, UVM Extension and Middlebury College and so on and so forth. So those were not, you know, were, they weren't just pulled from anywhere.
Sure. But did you have anything, like, you agree with all of those recommendations, right? And this isn't anything in addition to those? So if we read those, we've pretty much got what you're saying? Cool. All right, good.
Can I add one more?
Matt?
So, one, I just wanted to second the comments from the gentleman that spoke first on this particular section. And secondly, I had a comment on, uh, Roman numeral two, which appears to follow Roman numeral three. There's a drafting error there.
Oh, typo, okay.
Yeah, um, pa- page 133. Um, all commercial projects and major residential projects which are three or more dwellings, can we just clarify if the dwellings is like a building or a dwelling unit?
Okay.
Um, and then if it is in fact a dwelling unit, um, are, uh, several of our zones allow for conditional uses of up to six dwelling units on a lot, uh, in the same neighborhood as single-family dwellings. And if we're going to require, uh, any, any property with three or more units to submit a complete landscaping plan, but not require the same of the single-family homes on the, on the same street, or the duplexes on the same street, that just seems unfair. Uh, I, I definitely appreciate where the, where the planning commission's trying to go with this section, because if you're doing a subdivision that is three houses, you are effectively creating a streetscape. It's important to have landscaping guidance, but, um, that, that seems a bit onerous, uh, or, or, onerous is the wrong word. It, it just seems asymmetric that two properties next door to one another, one would be subject to the detailed and good landscaping requirements, and here any other would not.
Can I ask a quick follow-up?
Yes.
So if you wanted to use the dwelling unit, if we wanted to use the dwelling unit metric?
Yeah.
Where would you set the threshold?
I would just match it to the, to the allowed conditional use of the zone.
Okay, so anytime it goes in front of the DRB and it's residential, it would require a landscaping plan? Mm-hmm, okay.
Yeah, I mean, it would have, it would have to, I suppose.
Anything else on that big landscaping section? You had to have one.
Well, I just wanted to say that I wouldn't like that at all. Uh, if every, every time you, somebody, it's something that someone wanted to do, um, had to go before the DRB, for instance, if they were, um, wanting to add on to a non-conforming structure, they had to have a landscaping plan, I think that would be overly restrictive for a homeowner.
Okay.
That wouldn't allow them to have the freedom that we expect to have as homeowners.
Right. So it sounds like we've got things on both ends of the spectrum, and we'll just have to talk about what seems like a reasonable threshold. Okay, ready to move on to lighting?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um, so that section, oh yeah, that section needed updating to be reflective of new LED lighting technologies. Um, so the list of prohibited types of lighting was updated. We updated color temperature, illumination levels, again, just to help with review of lighting plans when they come in. And we added requirements for lighting plans, they're similar to what I'm requiring now, only it's, you know, just really backed up in words, so it's clear and prescriptive. Um, we added, uh, specific lighting standards for outdoor stadiums and recreational fields because they're just so different than everything else. And then we added standards for allowing upcast lighting for American flags, one per property. That's been sort of a, a debate around town, and we decided that that seemed fair for one flag per property to have upcast lighting. It's not any kind of upcast lighting, we actually give a, um, a brightness threshold, it can't be above a certain illumination. Um, Bill, did you have anything in that section?
Um, I didn't in my email, but I hesitated on raising this, but I will, and, um, and it's just a question on, um, Roman numeral six, the change from the height of any lighting fixture shall now exceed 20 feet, it used to be, it was 35 feet. And I hate to use an anecdotal example to make my point, but I will. You know, on our batch plant on K Street, we certainly have a lighting fixture that's above 20 feet, but it's lighting a walkway that's for maintenance at the top of the batch plant. And so I, I guess my concern is that, um, this potentially precludes that from being a conforming aspect of our, um, project or whatever. And so I don't know if there's a way to add language that, you know, you know, as you said, uh, accept as indicated and nine below, you know, maybe there's a way to accept as in the, for some sort of safety measure. Why, and again, maybe we could accomplish that same lighting with a light under 20 feet, I'm not sure. But that's, so that's why I hesitated to bring it up. But I do think it maybe warrants the fact that there, I guess I could foresee some use where some sort of safety condition, someone in an industrial district, say, might need a light above 20 feet.
Is that the case? Um, like, that's just a really good example with the batch plant, is it that high because of the airport, or?
No, no, we have it that high to light the walkways that both get up to that level of the batch plant as well as circulate around it.
Right. So in that case, it sounds like in, with this new regulation, you just have to have a couple at 20 feet to illuminate the same area.
Well, this walkway is above 20 feet, so, again, there, you may be right, there may be a way to accomplish it within the constraints of this.
So I'm asking you, I wasn't getting it.
I just don't know if there is, and that's why I'm saying, but I, I guess I feel like there could be some latitude provided, whether it's that particular case or someone else that makes a case as to why they might, for very good reason, need a light above 20 feet to accomplish something if it's also still meeting all the other...
Yeah.
That's a great point.
Cut. Okay.
Seems like a fairly easy one to include in the K Street.
Not trying to throw, throw a monkey wrench in, but just while we have Bill here and we're talking about this kind of thing, do you remember if we kept that, um, that all the lights should go off at the close of business? Or not?
Just one hour after, yeah.
Just one hour.
That's one hour after, okay, so that should be reasonable, I should think. And that would mean that for security lighting, speaking of security lighting, um, just wall packs or something would have to be on motion sensors. And that would just be for new construction. I just wanted to be forthcoming, because that was kind of a big one, but I think it's a good one.
Yeah, and I certainly appreciate all the, you know, what you're trying to accomplish with this.
All right, sounds good. So the next one's a little, little different, um, little different flavor. This is the ag and forestry uses, section 780. Um, we added a definition for farmer's market because that came up recently, we didn't have one, um, and rules were added, um, just clarifying, uh, chickens in residential districts. No, it was when Victor wanted to add, he must get that call a lot.
It's all the rage.
Um, so section 830, that's that resumption of non-conforming use again. There it is. Timeframe of one year was added to the definition of a discontinued use. So if you have a business, it's discontinued for one year or more, and then you try to restart the business, then, um, we'd want the DRB to take a look at it to make sure nothing had changed and that all the conditions still make sense. Section 835, non-conforming structures. All right, non-conforming, so this was, this has been a really big one with the DRB lately because, um, some structures, especially structures along Route 7, um, that are already in the right-of-way, which is very, very wide along Route 7, are technically non-conforming. And you're not supposed to increase the degree of the non-conformity when you make an addition to that structure. And the DRB has had trouble deciding if just making more frontage within the, the right-of-way of Route 7 is increasing the degree of non-conformity, or if you would actually need to approach Route 7 further to increase the degree. And so this clarifies that, and it would be the latter rather than the former. You could, you could continue along on that same line, but you couldn't get closer.
It says that in the new rules? Do you, I looked for the, um, I looked for the zoning on the website, and I wasn't able to find the amended language. And I went wondering if you, it, can you put that up on there? This, you said the redlined, uh, version or something is on the website. Is it possible to, to put that up for us to really see? I'd like to see what this section says now, because I'm involved with two non-conforming structures.
So it says what, it says what I just said, I'm willing to re-explain it. I was, I was trying to avoid putting up the redlined version just because I don't want to, like, discuss every single word, but I'm happy to do it because that's what hearings are for, if that's what you want. Um, but, and, you know, I, I know the, I know the case that you're talking about, it's, it's your situation, and, um, yeah, in this case, if you were within that setback and you wanted to continue along the line of being in that setback, that wouldn't increase the degree of your non-conformity under the new regulations. You would only be increasing the degree of the non-conformity if you went further into the setback. So that actually helps you.
Okay, that's what it says.
Yep.
And, but it says you have to seek a waiver to do it?
I mean, that's what it says.
Well, you'd have to have a waiver anyway. Wouldn't you have to have a waiver anyway? Because it's non-conforming. So this, but this allows you to have, to get that waiver. You'd have to get a waiver anyway.
Does that mean you have to go to the DRB again, or you can, or the admin, the officer, you could do, you could grant the waiver?
It would depend on the situation. As you know, some waivers I can grant administratively. Your particular waiver, I have not been willing to grant administratively because it had been through the DRB in the past, but if yours...
But once these rules are in place, will that change? Now, I mean, would it change? Say, I ever brought it...
Would it change, would it change whether or not you have to go in front of the DRB for your projects?
No.
Would it change whether or not I could approve the setback administratively?
Yeah. In a similar situation.
Yeah, the new, under the new regulations, I could theoretically approve a setback waiver administratively for a structure like that.
Okay.
But in your particular case, I would not.
Yeah, I, I know.
Mm-hmm. Just because it's been to the DRB before.
Right.
So then I'm usurping their authority. So the administrative officer, just to clarify, always has the option to send anything she wants in front of the DRB, he or she wants. She! And so I just would in that case, because they've seen it before and they would be offended, I think, if I did it administratively, they just want to, to have consistency. Yeah, which we've talked about before.
But I would, but it's right, written right there in the new, okay.
Yeah, we're trying, we're trying to hear you guys and trying to make things a little easier. Yeah.
Maybe I'm looking in the wrong place, but I'm not seeing the redline on that section, on the version that was posted online.
Yeah, I'm having a little trouble just, I think probably just because there's so much going on, I'm having a little trouble using the website myself right now. Anybody else have a redlined version they want to, like, read that out?
Have I got, had all the other redlines, or is this one of those? Find the same.
Unless it's just the one year.
Just in that section?
Yeah.
All right. Well, how about I correct that in the select board version? We've got two more hearings on this, and that sounds like it's just another typo then. And if you want to come in and talk to me about it, I can, like, print it off and give it to you and stuff like that.
Thanks.
Yeah. Sorry to fail you on this, on this one. Section 835. All right, moving on to section 930, if that's okay. Um, certificates of occupancy and compliance. Um, there's a new state law that just requires local, um, local municipalities to require the, a proof of filing for a building energy certificate when one is required by the state energy code. So we're sort of administering the state's code, and it's, you're supposed to require that when a certificate of occupancy is filed. So, um, we haven't been doing that because it wasn't in our regulations, so we're adding it to our regulations so that we can be in conformance with what the state expects of us. But I'll still be referring, any questions on the energy code to the state?
So I had a quick comment on that. It wasn't, and maybe this is just my lack of ability to understand, but it wasn't clear that the RVES was a precedent condition for receiving a certificate of occupancy.
No? Okay.
So you may want to consider following that.
Thank you. So that's all I had, did I forget anything?
Okay.
Okay. So, so that wraps up the hearing on the zoning and subdivision regulations. Um, we're going to close the hearing.
Yeah.
We're going to do the hearing on the town plan, and then the planning commission is planning to stay and discuss some of these different revisions and things, but thank you, everybody, for your comments.
It's very helpful to have interested parties actually read it and participate. It's really great.
And experience it, and experience...
It's really flattering in a weird way.
Yeah, no, I mean, we...
It was just helpful. We only have so many perspectives sitting in the room, so to have others is very helpful.
And we had very detailed discussions about it, but this is, oh no, this is great. This is, this is fine. Okay, um, moving on to the...
So you should, you should close the hearing.
Oh, close this hearing, move to close, somebody moved to close the hearing?
I'll move to close the hearing.
A second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, officially opening the public hearing on the town plan readoption, this is the planning commission's public hearing on it. And, um, this is what we would call an update. This is not a rewrite of the, of the town plan at all. Um, we did a major rewrite five years ago, six years ago, with our town plan, and what we have decided to do this time was to, uh, look at things, it's more, and considering that, the town plan is an aspirational document, and it's something that we wanted to make sure that we clarified, um, what our intent was in the original town plan. We did, um, we, as I said, we did not change any of the zoning. Um, we took out things that we had already accomplished that were in the town plan, and there were a number of these things. It was, it was amazing how many things that we did do, um, as a town, not just us, I mean, the, the whole town, and it, it's something, um, that we should all be proud of, that these things actually didn't just sit on the shelf and a lot was done. Uh, just as with the previous iteration, the one that we're using now, everything, every chapter is, um, interrelated with the other chapters. You can't just look at them in, as a single beam. And so there is some duplication of things, and we are very, um, careful that things are balanced... are balanced. We've tried to balance things, that they do interact with each other well. There is, I don't, I think we'll just, we'll, we'll start, we'll go through it one by one, chapter by chapter. One of the things that came out that we needed to do was do a clear implementation process and a clear implementation chapter. So at the very end of the document, there are, there's a chart that shows what the strategy is, what the action is, and then who's responsible for it, a priority is attached to it, and what the status is of it. Well, one of the things that we did do, and I think we did a really good job compared to what it was before, is the way it's organized and the way we went through carefully and figured out the goals, figured out our strategies and actions on how to reach all those goals and have, and to group them so that they made some sense. And I think that was our main focus, to really work hard on that process, to make it a simpler document to follow. So with that, I think what we'd like to do is just go through chapter by chapter and just ask if you have any questions, and if there were any major changes, and the first chapter is the historical one-
Mm-hmm.
-that we brought up. I mean, we, we have, of course, like population pieces and things like that. Does anybody have any questions before I start on, on what we've done here? On the updates? So the first section is the his-
Nancy, there was one.
Oh, I'm sorry. Judy, I didn't see you.
Is this like the public comment?
Yes.
As we go, yeah, chapter by chapter?
Oh.
When we hit it?
You can't go wrong.
Is it germane to how we proceed? Sure.
Well, no, I just want to commend the Planning Commission.
Oh, we'll take compliments over that.
You can talk.
No, really for seeing the importance of pulling together preservation and growth or development, and/or development. So the ideas of preserving the town's historical legacy, its, its culture, its natural resources, which are my caution, but the environment, with plans for future growth and development. And I, I just saw that wording repeated throughout the plan, and I, I just want to say thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So do you want me to go through the historic, just flip through and?
I'll do a PowerPoint if you want me to take a whirl.
Yeah, oh, you do it, okay.
Yeah.
You've got it all set, good.
According to our plan.
Yes.
So, let's see. Oh, that's not going to work. So I thought it would be good to go over the past timeline really quick. So the current town plan was adopted in December of 2012. Then it got amended in 2014, but just amending a plan doesn't reset the time clock. State law says that we have a five-year time period in which we need to, to readopt plans. That's now been extended to eight years. So after we adopt this one, we'll have eight years before we have to readopt again. But we can still do minor amendments, you know, we could do them once a year if we wanted to. The new plan needs to be readopted by December of 2017. Just wanted to let everybody know, the Planning Commission has met twice a month on these updates since September 2015, believe it or not. We went chapter by chapter. First, we talked through every chapter, just kind of generally brainstorming about what's there now and, and what is new. And then we went back and saw those chapters again and really worked on what the edits would look like, and then went a third time through the sections with staff having tried to capture that input in actual edits. And, you know, even though it doesn't seem at the end like we changed a lot, I think that we had a lot of really good conversations that both educated their new staff member. I've learned so much about the town in the last two years. And also kind of helped us identify where we need to be doing studies, plans, reports, and like, you know, really thinking long-term about different things in the town and how those things are progressing, and try to make sure that our plan is contemporary and captures the way that we're growing so that our regulations can follow suit. So it's been a good process.
And then just like to add one thing, we also tried to put language in that we felt would help us get grant money to do some of those studies. So we very intentionally are trying to set ourselves up to kind of get grant money to do some of that study that we need for future rewrites and future planning. And that was very much kind of lens that we looked at the chapters through.
That's a really good point, because I have heard some feedback, like, why is that goal in there? Like, how are you going to get to there? Like, you know, do we have money for that yet? And the answer is no, we're going to be searching.
Because the reality is, is that the studies to get to where we know we need to be are rather expensive in aggregate. So the more of that we can get from grant money, you need certain things in the town plan to get that grant money effectively, so we tried to include some of that.
And so I did put in, you know, future amendments, we're, we're planning in 2018 and 19 to be working on the energy section, so there's, there's time to make changes. Even though this isn't a rewrite, there's time to put, to do a rewrite once we have the data that supports making big changes. And so the overall timeline for this readoption, today is the Planning Commission hearing. Then the Planning Commission needs to make changes, and they'll vote in their changes and refer the document to the Select Board. Then the Select Board needs to have two hearings on their level because of the size of our town, readopting the town plan by December 2017, which sounds like a lot of time, but since we have to put 30 days in between our Select Board hearings, we're really just, we're, we're tight on the timeline right now. But it's worth it because we did a good job, I think, with all of our edits. So here's the table of contents, just in general, the organizational structure of the town plan, which I think you've all seen. I'm just going to go into Roman numeral two now and just sort of like hit the, the major chapters in the town plan. And Nancy recommended I just sort of try to summarize some of the changes that we made to those sections rather than laboriously going through word for word or anything. So historical development is the first chapter. We definitely updated this chapter to include recent events, especially in downtown, you know, Cross Street Bridge, municipal office building, even municipal gym. A lot has happened in the town even since 2014. We rephrased the language with regard to historic settlement patterns. We, we kind of reduced the specificity. There was a lot of description of what human scale means, and a lot of architectural language about exactly what a neighborhood pattern looks like, and we just kind of translated that into conceptual planning speak, you know, planning language. We made additions to reference tax credits because tax credits are really important to historical development and preserving old historic infrastructure. And we referenced how density, it also helps reduce the carbon footprint and auto-dependence. So those were the changes to the historical section, not a lot of changes in the goals and recommendations.
Are there any questions, or, yes?
Do you get, does the town plan get specific about areas where you want to have improved historical development, for instance?
No, it just talks like in, in general, townwide, these are our values, and this is our vision and our goal to protect, to protect what we have now for, for various different reasons. So natural and scenic resources was the next section we looked at. We, we removed some of the, some of the air quality data from this section and included it as an external reference. You could find it on your own, and it would always be up to date. We mentioned the fluvial erosion hazard area and the new stormwater regs. Those were additions we made. We added a better explanation of the use value appraisal program for, for, for reducing the amount of taxes that you owe on open space. We reduced the statistics in the marble and gravel resources section, mostly because I can't figure out where they came from, so I couldn't really update them. So we just kind of cut down on the, the amount of detail we had in that section. And once again, you could use an external link if you wanted to know all about gravel extraction. We reorganized our goals and recommendations, and we removed a couple of the implementation goals with regard to stormwater that were clearly the responsibility of public works so that we weren't like sort of infringing on their territory. Local economy. We looked at the local economy section, and we wanted to just make it, we wanted to bring it up to date. We wanted to make it more contemporary and more reflective of what we have now. But we also recognized that, that there are still a lot of studies going on with regard to economic development. As staff, I tried to compare the, the white paper to some of the economic statistics I got from the Department of Labor and NIA, the North American Industrial Classification System, and just the things in the white paper and, and our, in our retail study weren't necessarily jiving with the data I was finding. So we just kind of backed way off in the local economy section and talked in general terms about the economy in Middlebury. We added a reference to the ag economy because the agricultural economy is very important here. We added a reference to the creative economy. You know, both Nancy and Barbara worked on the creative economy report and, you know, pointed out that that's an important part of our economy. Those things weren't referenced in there before, really. We included recommendations for strategic planning of targeted areas in town. We can't very well talk about economic development on Exchange Street or, you know, down Route 7 if we're, if we don't have a, a nice targeted strategic planning session about those places and get, gather the input from the people who are living and working in those areas. So we just kind of talked about what, what planning we need to do, and we tried to present what data was available from state and federal resources, and just kind of left it at that. And we changed, we took small picky goals, and we tried to make them more conceptual in nature. For example, trying to tie infill and reuse of an area instead of saying exactly where the infill or the reuse of an area should happen, we tried to just tie it to the concept of trying to promote more development in our growth centers and in areas that have existing infrastructure, you know, so that's my best-
And I'll just elaborate that just a little bit in that some of those areas very specifically was what I was referring to earlier in terms of needing more studies to really understand the best way to approach those, and whereas we felt that some of the previous language was a little bit prescriptive without having been properly studied. And we would like to kind of set ourselves up to properly study that before we issue those prescriptions.
So that's local economy. Housing, housing was very similar to local economy. Again, we had very specific goals and recommendations, and we tried to include some new data in there. We used data from Housing Vermont State sources. We used the recently completed housing study for Addison County. We didn't have a housing study for, for the town of Middlebury, but there is one countywide that tells us a lot about people's incomes and, and, you know, where the shortages in affordable housing occur, because there's a lot of talk about affordable housing, but we tried through data to really demonstrate where the gaps were to the best of our ability without actually doing a housing study. But we did include a goal that we should do a housing study at some point, just in case we need to apply for grant funding, you know, it's that sort of thing that Sam's been talking about. We updated the census data. We updated the residential sales data. This is the first time we've provided data, like really good data on, well, not really good, as, as good as we could find for this update, data on the homeless and people using temporary housing. And we hope to meet, for what it's worth, we hope to meet with social service agencies in the next year or so to try to refine our understanding of, of that segment of the population even further so that we can continue to make forward progress on this, on this, this problem that we know exists of affordable housing. And so a lot of our goals aren't really targeted at helping us get the information we need to take the next steps to move toward more specific goals and recommendations for really tackling it in a targeted way. So that's the housing section.
I could just walk away with anecdote.
Mm-hmm.
I recently rented an apartment here in Middlebury. I advertised it at $965 a month. It was a beautiful apartment in the heart of downtown. I had 45 responses, which I was able to whittle down, that was in five days. I was able to whittle that down to five sterling, totally creditworthy, excellent employment history, built pets applicants, and I had to choose from one of them. So any studies we can do that actually look at vacancy rates, affordability, and the, the sort of challenges of finding affordable or, not even, not even low income, just, just affordable for sort of middle-income people. Anything we can do to get more money to study that, I think is going to be of value to the town.
Trying-
Probably repeating what you're already doing.
Totally.
That's what we're trying.
That's exactly. Yeah.
It's a high priority for us.
The next section is the energy section. See, I was all ready for specific questions on this one. Okay, the energy section. We, oh yeah, so in this section, we debated on whether or not to undertake a, a heavy update of the energy section to try to bring it into compliance with Act 174, which is a recently passed act that would allow us to have substantial deference in public service board hearings. You know, basically, you know how solar facilities fall under public service board jurisdiction? Now, if you really update your energy plan and make an energy plan plus in your town plan, the PSB might actually listen to you during those hearings that take place. So we'd like to do that at some point, but it-
Might. It might.
Yeah. We'd like to do that at some point, but it takes heavy-duty data collection and mapping and things like that. So we're letting the Regional Planning Commission take a trial run with a couple of pilot towns to kind of gather that data for the county first, and then we're going to try to, you know, work in league with them sometime next year to work on that section. And we'll work with the Middlebury Energy Committee on that, too. So that's the plan. For now, we just updated some of the data and added references to the state comprehensive energy plan and just kind of captured that. No new energy goals. Who knows, maybe with the result of this climate economy initiative, we'll end up with new initiatives that we can include in the future. There's a lot happening in the energy category, so we're just on, on hold with this section for now while we wait for people to produce some things that we can incorporate.
And like Jen mentioned earlier in this hearing, we expect amendments to the energy section. We just didn't feel like they were going to be ready at the same timeline that the rest of this needs to be adopted on. So we wanted to do it correctly instead of quickly.
The transportation section, it's also something that, that changes all the time. It's always in flux. Previous iterations of this section asserted a lot of influence in, on public works. I, I just think during previous iterations, we discovered that there was just like a lot of language that said, you know, like, public works should do this, or, you know, like Select Board should do that, capital planning should reflect that. And we tried to just kind of back it off and be helpful in the way that we best know how, which is to tie transportation goals in the town to sort of land use goals. And said, hey, you know, when, when you do transportation planning, can you marry that with our land use planning? And there's a couple of neat recommendations in there for how to accomplish that. If we did a transportation plan townwide, we could base some of the recommendations in that, in that transportation plan on, on actual land use projections of growth in different areas of town that we would help in, in supplying the consultant who did the transportation plan. And that would give you transportation recommendations that were, you know, were coordinated with our, with our ideas for where in town we expect growth next.
Again, trying to set ourselves up for grant money for real studies and planning.
So I would say now it really focuses on, on, on planning our transportation improvements, coordinating with the new, you know, Director of Public Works, Public Works Planning, and just coordinating in general, townwide on, on these things, so. The education section has been, it's mostly, was just an update to reflect the current data available on education. Lots of good data in that section.
I had a couple of typos that I found that we need to correct.
Let's talk about those later on.
Okay.
Okay.
It's no, yeah, no content, just-
Yep. Yeah, so we're, we're meeting after this, right, to talk about all that stuff? Okay.
Right.
The colleges and institutions section was updated in the same way. Nancy took the lead on that and was able to include some information about the new college master plan, you know, and just update dates and, and data and information in that section. Community facility services and utilities, that's another big section that covers a lot of different things in town. The best thing that we did with this, in my opinion, was adding references to social services. We, we didn't really have a lot of emphasis on, on social, the social services sector in Middlebury before, so now we refer to that. We're going to, again, try to beef that up in the next couple of years by talking to people who revolve in those circles all the time. We added a reference to CCV in this section rather than the institution section. We put Porter Hospital in this section, and then we added a section on, on Parks and Recreation with Terry's Assistance. So the land use section, in many ways, is the most daunting section. It, it goes through different areas of town and, and talks about our vision for those areas and the direction we think they're growing in, and so this is going to require- and talks about our vision for those areas and the direction we think they're growing in. And so this is going to require, you know, a series of discussions with the planning commission, hopefully inviting in people who live and work in those different areas to try to figure out what direction we're heading in. And so the land use section is a really great section because that informs the zoning map and, you know, just, it's, to me, it's like the heart of the plan. And we didn't make significant changes here this go around, except to just add really good goals and recommendations for how we'd like to collect the information to make this section stronger in the future. Judy left, but Judy has been great at attending a lot of our meetings and giving us, you know, some public feedback as we went along. And she and Karen gave us some input on East Middlebury. So we actually increased the section about East Middlebury a little bit, talking about some of the natural resources and things that they value there. We took out the reference to growth centers because we don't actually have a state-designated growth center, but we talked about them differently as the areas where we anticipate and want and expect development. We took out the section describing special overlays in great detail because it's more of something that should be explained in the zoning. But yeah, mostly we left this very important section alone and just reorganized it. There's more to do here in the future. The coordination section. Yeah, the coordination section is just a really small section that we just updated for today. Chris helped with that a lot. And then the implementation program, which was formerly in narrative form, now we have implementation matrix. And so this matrix, this is just a land use implementation matrix. What it does is it conveniently summarizes all the recommendations and actions that are at the end of every chapter in chart form so that, you know, if somebody wanted to just get the Cliff Notes version of the town plan, we hope they wouldn't, but if they wanted to, they could just detach the implementation section and you could use that with different committees in town. I can think of lots of committees that could use that in their planning. And so they would see kind of the ideas the planning commission has come up with for for different studies and things to be performed in the future. So there's several pages of implementation matrix in the plan. And there's these columns. We created these column headings, but we haven't filled them in. And so maybe committees want to use them down the line, maybe we want to fill them in down the line. It's just kind of on hold. But lead responsibility, priority, and status. Theoretically, you could use this matrix in this way to figure out who's taking the lead on different tasks and where it's at and how you're progressing on these different things. So this is a fun new thing in our town plan. And that's the last section I have to talk about. So do you want to turn it over to public comment?
Yeah. Are there any questions?
Oh, and then there's maps and appendices. Sorry.
Yeah.
I just thought I'd keep going. I was rushing it. So maps, I mean, there were already maps in the town plan. It's important to note there are no map changes. The zoning map did not change as a result of this readoption. All we did was have Regional Planning Commission just, you know, re-update our maps and make just small changes. You know, these colors are too much alike, you know, could you take off this overlay and put it on a different one? So these are the maps in a standard town plan. There's a land use districts map. Here's East Middlebury. Here's the town as a whole. There's the village area. In this town, this land use map and our zoning map happen to be the same. Some towns, they're different. For us, it's the same. We threw in a pop, oh, mm-hmm.
Do any of the maps include wetlands and prime ag?
Yeah, that's later on here.
Is it on?
Yep. Here's a population density map real quick, just to, you know, just to kind of show where population density is in the town. This is a map that's always been in the town plan. Public and institutional ownership, conserve land, private working landscape parcels, road name maps. A slope map, which I think is helpful if we ever add regulations about steep slopes, which we don't have now. A little map showing traffic counts. A community facilities map, which is required by state law. Here's your water resources and flood resiliency. It's showing wetlands and flood plain.
Can I comment on that, Jen?
Uh-huh.
When it goes to the seeking of grant money. I recently went through a process actually where the wetlands delineated by the state on the sort of widely available state maps.
Mm-hmm.
Varied substantially as it went from 10% wetlands to 90% wetlands on parcel. When they were actually field delineated per the state's requirements. So to the extent that there are areas where the planning commission envisions encouraging development that are not currently developed, grant money that helps you accurately delineate wetlands and prime ag in a way that seeks concurrence with both Army Corps and
Yeah, that one.
I think it's going to be in the town. I think it's something you have to go out on your own. I think it's just something you want to target. And it really is about getting the state to agree to what those boundaries are so that you don't allocate resources at, you know, 1,000 acres that you want to turn into housing, you know, commercial or industrial. And all of a sudden find out that out of that 1,000, there's really only like 25 that are used at home.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it's a predicament. It's a predicament. Fortunately, this is just recently created by regional planning with the current state layers, but yeah, yeah. Field delineation of wetlands is always really crucial. And for what it's worth, the Conservation Commission's going to work on this Middlebury wetland inventory, I hope, so that so that we can have a better, more recent idea of wetlands and vernal pools that aren't even captured by the state mapping, because that's pretty out of date. So thanks.
I think that points an excellent one out.
And it's certainly one we can add in action, too.
That's it in the map. I guess we took out the prime ag soils map. And I think it was for exactly the reason that Matt stated. I would rather have people use the state resources to locate prime ag soils and not rely artificially on this. It's just that this map is required by state statutes, so we have to put it in. And then in the appendices, in the appendices, you know, we've got some more information on the historical resources from the first chapter. We've got information on flooding history, which is always interesting to read through. Here's a discussion of the compatibility with neighboring plans that Chris worked on. And then also, Chris worked on updating our list of transportation plans, which has been helpful more times than I can tell you when we're applying for grants and things. Now that finally officially wraps it up.
So are there any other comments concerning town plan? Questions? Hearing none. If we have a move to close the public hearing?
Don't move.
I'll second.
Second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. I would like to suggest that we do the town plan piece first, discussion of the town plan first before the zoning piece. See, where are we going? Is that, does that sound fine? Let's do that?
Yep.
Okay. There were, I did have a few changes. Should we just do those or not?
Yeah, I know that we have people here, but I was counting on a break.
Okay.
So that I could-
Sure.
Print Bill's email and print, I mean, Bill hasn't said anything that wasn't in his email, but it's helpful to have it as a-
That would be helpful.
A visual reference of what he just told us.
Sure.
That would be helpful.
That would be great.
The tree committee, you know.
Yeah. How much time do you need? 10, 15? What?
Uh, yeah. 10, 15, probably.
10, 15?
Yep.
Okay, let's recess. Do we need to move to recess?
I guess so. I don't know. What do you think? No.
Good. We'll recess. There are a few grapes in there. The zoning changes are going to require-
Well, we didn't make any decision upstairs. You should ask the whole board.
Yeah, I am. I'm going to. We briefly spoke upstairs. I'm going to suggest, and how you want to do this is up to you, is to hold off on doing the zoning changes because it's going to be quite a bit of discussion about them and to have the redline versions in front of us and Bill's piece in front of us. And Matt didn't give us one in writing, but we have a lot and he certainly could. So that would give us an opportunity. We're not under the timeline crunch with the zoning. We could do it and piggyback the first hearing, well, we might have to have another hearing on it, but we can deal with that. But that's not the time crunch piece. And I'd rather do it right and have all of the pieces in front. So what is people's pleasure?
I think that's a great idea. Not having them all in front of us and being able to see it in context is-
And to bring in all of the-
We're working wide, and so I think you're absolutely right. It would be a better discussion and better outcomes if we-
And there were some really good, there were some really good suggestions and so to be able to really deal with them. Is anybody else?
Sounds good to me.
I'd just like to add that most of what I heard was actually worth real consideration and incorporation because I think there were some unintended consequences of specific language used. And so to get that language right to avoid those unintended consequences is wise. So again, thank you.
Yeah, this is for good reason, not, you know, and we will certainly let you- And we will certainly make sure that you know, if you want to join us, when we have the discussion, too.
Do we know that we could add this to our agenda for the 21st? Or do we still have to wait to hear from the college?
No, I'm thinking, I'm thinking, I haven't heard, well, let's hold off on that.
Okay.
But perhaps as early as the 21st, which is in two weeks from today.
At our regular noon.
At our regular meeting at noon, unless unless we are meeting with the college that day, I haven't heard yet. So that's a, that would be a question. All right. Can, let's have, Beth had some typos and I found a few typos and questions. So maybe you could follow through.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Bill. Really appreciate it. Do you want, do you have those from Beth?
Yeah, I gave a copy to everybody.
Oh, is that, oh, got it. Of course, we don't have pages on this.
Yeah, the page numbers is a little tough.
Which needs to be added for the, I mean, can that just be done automatically when it's printed? Page numbers? No?
There are no page numbers.
Yeah, and that's too bad because these are all Word documents. I don't know why Beth has page numbers. She must be using the PDF page numbers, like from the actual PDF document.
Uh-huh.
But when I looked it up on the website, there were no page numbers.
Right.
And so the reason is because they're all separate. They're all separate Word documents that have been PDF-merged.
Correct.
And the reason I'm making this face like grrr is because I have no idea if you can add page numbers when you PDF-merge a document. I don't think you can.
Depends on your-
It's just nice to say the graphic designer is hard at work at giving us page numbers and every other good thing. So, but I can look into that.
So looking these up might be difficult, is what we're saying.
But anyway, they all look like they make sense to me.
They do to me, too. I would say, in going through this tonight, I think, I'm questioning why we put the timeline in the back of the document as an appendix. It seems like a forgotten, it seems useless. I'm really questioning whether we shouldn't just put it back in the Section 2 Historic Development of Middlebury where it has more context.
I actually, oh, I see what you're saying. That timeline.
Yeah, I mean, we did go over it. We did change it and update it. It just, it seems like it's just hanging out there as the only appendix we have and-
It's not the only appendix.
It's all we want here.
Oh, there are lots of, there's a list of flood events, too.
I got, here's a whole.
But isn't that part of the flooding history is part of the historical piece?
No, it's part of the natural resources.
I'm the child in the group.
I didn't realize why she said that.
Spilled my water.
Sorry.
I'm sorry, Barbara.
Thank you.
It does, it's not a big deal. It's just-
So what is your pleasure on the historic? Do you want, I mean, is there reason to have it versus reason not to have it in the-
What's the reason to have it in the main part of the document?
I think it's more what is the reason to have it as an appendix.
I don't know.
It's short. It's been, we really edited it down. It's just, if we're going to have it as an appendix, it's almost not worth having.
Well, I think it would be fine to put it back in.
So as I recall, when you guys went through this, there was just like a lot of stuff in that in that section. We were trying to move things out to shorten our chapters.
And we shortened, we really shortened this one way down.
But you know, it's funny, there's a graphic you're not seeing here. In that graphic, that graphic isn't in the Word version. It's being added into the graphic designer version. And it's that table that you labored on that talks about everything, like from like the inception of the grammar school to-
Oh, is that the one you're talking about?
Well, then why do we have this?
What, I can't see what you're-
It's the historic reference.
It's appendix one. If we already have it in this chapter.
Oh, you're, that's a different thing.
The historical resources?
There's one that's a-
I see what you're saying.
Historical highlights and one is historical resources.
But then, yeah, it's just an odd little appendix. I mean, Pulp Mill Bridge, where they're in. I mean, I don't think those is historical resources, but this isn't worth. Not having what Jen is talking about in our version to see is, it changes my thinking. And now that I know it's there, although it doesn't appear to be there, it's there in the phantom world. It will, it makes a big difference. But coming upon this at the end seemed to be very anecdotal. I mean, not an extraneous. But anyway, we can move ahead.
One thing we could do very simply is at the bottom of the few historic highlights, the piece that we have there, there could be a web a reference to the historic, all the historic building. There's a website. I could just say, you know, to go in the appendix or the website, HTTP or whatever.
On the town website?
Yeah, yeah. Just, I mean, in, right in there, reference to historic resources and it could just go to that website if we wanted to add that on this, the historical highlights piece. And then not have this in the appendix. I mean, it's not a big deal.
It's not a big deal.
I'd, procedurally, I would leave it as is because nobody thinks it's a big deal and it's a bigger deal to change it procedurally.
Super. So how, what do people want to do on that?
Sounds like we're-
We're fine with leaving it.
Okay.
Be kind to our graphic designer.
Okay. So we're accepting all of, and thanking Beth for all of her typos that she's presenting?
Yeah, let me think if there's anything else here.
I have a couple of things.
Yeah, let's hear yours. I had a couple, too.
In education.
Are we going in order of chapters?
Sure, go ahead. Where are you?
Okay, natural resources.
What's natural resources?
Second page, under flooding and flood plains. The third paragraph seems to assume that the FEH has not been passed yet, and it has. So we were intending to update that. The overlay zone.
All right, now that I found that chapter, can you tell me again, second page?
Flooding and flood plains, third paragraph down.
Okay.
Says the adoption of the FEH overlay zone will prevent future encroachment. It sounds like it hasn't been done yet. So I think we should say an FEH overlay zone was adopted in blank year. It will prevent further encroachment, et cetera.
So when was it, when was it adopted?
I don't remember. I think it was about two years ago.
Twenty seventeen. Do you remember?
I can give you the date.
A real date? Okay. So we can say adopted 20, you put it in and the right date and we'll accept that.
Instead of saying adoption of it, will, say it was adopted and it will. Okay, and there were some pictures in this chapter that aren't here?
None of the, none of the graphics are in.
Okay, and then there was a page called, what is low-impact development? That's going to be in there? All right?
Yeah, it is now, unless, unless there's a reason.
Okay, it's just not showing, so that's still there. Okay, and the next one is economy? Okay, so four point two point two, at the end of the economy section. It says pursue businesses that make appropriate economic use of our local resources. I remember talking about this, and you said, I want to.
What, Sam?
Said, we want to make sure we're not telling everybody to just come in and gouge out our, our landscape. So I thought we were going to take that out, or maybe we already reworded it. I don't know. Pursue businesses that make appropriate economic use of our local resources, including agriculture, forestry, plantation.
Yeah, I think we already reworded that, and that's why it says appropriate economic use.
Okay.
Instead of, I don't remember what the old language was, but this looks like the reworded version to me, so.
This seems, yeah.
Yeah, it seems appropriate.
And.
Do you have any in housing?
Housing. I remember, Jen, you said you did a study of where the houses, the new homes were built, and that most of them went into the new subdivisions, and now that that's getting full, you know, it's time to open some new subdivisions. I don't see that in there.
I would be very uncomfortable with that.
Yeah? Okay. New neighborhoods will be needed to give new residents the option of living in the village core rather than on rural acreages? You don't want to put that in?
That I do like. I think it was the word subdivision that gives me this chiver, since we were trying to do. I, it's really hard not knowing exactly where you are.
Yeah, where are you, I don't know where you are either, and what.
Well, okay, this would, I don't know where it would exactly be added, but.
What is it you're trying to do?
It's a sentence she wants to add.
I know, I want to hear it again.
But where?
Okay, it says between X and Y years, most new housing went into the subdivisions at South Village and South, what's the other one? South Ridge. Now that those developments are filling up, new neighborhoods will be needed in order to give residents the option of living in the village core rather than on rural acreages.
So you want to add that somewhere?
And take out.
That was just to be added somewhere, because Jen did all this research, and I thought it'd be useful to put it in there.
Well, it was building permit data that I polled, and I was showing you trends.
I think that, that.
Oh, yeah, it could be under trends, that's one thing.
I thought, I thought I read that in here. That's why I'm.
I, I have to say, it's, it's so hard without page numbers.
The conversation was so long ago that it's, it's hard to remember now.
But I just read it today, and I thought I read that.
Oh, really?
Exact thing. That's why I'm.
Maybe I skimmed it too fast. Well, anyway, if it's not there, do you want to add it?
And I see a lot of other language that's very similar in strategy five point four. It, it feels to me like that concept is covered in five point four, but.
Like, discouraged residential development outside water and sewer. Continue to plan for denser residential growth in areas already served by town water and sewer.
Filling spaces within our townscapes rather than on our periphery.
I just thought that this data would be something to back it up.
Do you want to add it then to the five point four strategies?
Uh, certainly a strategy.
I would add it to trends, I think.
To where?
Trends.
Trends, okay.
Because you, you have numbers, right?
Yeah, yeah. And we talked about this extensively, I mean, we beat this section to death, so I, I don't want to say anything here either way, because I'm sure that we talked about this, and if you decided not to put it in, there was a reason.
You know where I think I saw it? I think it's in transportation. It's somewhere. It is somewhere in this document. I know I read it. So I don't, I think we're covered, and I think we're covered in the other section as well, so I'm not feeling the need that we have to put it in, but.
Okay.
Sarah, you?
I mean, I guess I, I need to, I feel like I want to now reread the whole section just to see. I mean, I don't think it's bad information to have in here. I do think that the, the goals at the end kind of cover what the, what the goals are, but it doesn't really say where we've been. So, I don't know, maybe we can look at that.
Well, we need to, we need to decide. So, either, either we feel it's covered, or we're, or we want to add it in. Can, where's, where is it that you said five point what?
Five point four in the strategies. There's, there's a bunch of language talking about the kind of strategies to essentially implement what's being discussed in the language that Chris brought up.
So maybe it's in the beginning section, it says.
Five point four point seven.
There's a few of them that kind of dance around the same idea. Sorry, Sarah, what were you saying?
Just at the beginning of the chapter, where it says, Middlebury has diverse housing options, and then residential sales information. It could probably go either of those sections. So the diverse housing option, mixture of historic homes, countryside. We could put it in that first section that says, there, you know, the talk would just bring up new, new development, that there were two, there have been two areas of, you know, newer construction that are getting built out, so that, you know, other areas will be looked for, looked to for future, or something like that.
That is the residential sales section, and this was based on building permit data. If you guys wanted to add this, I would add it to the narrative section, not the goals and recommendations, or I have to change all the implementation matrices.
Yeah.
I would add it under, I would add it under trends, and I would add the second sentence that Chris said, but not the first sentence, because I agree with Barbara that the first sentence is tenuous. Do you want to reread us the second sentence?
Could you read your second sentence again?
Now that the developments at South Village and South Ridge are filling up, new neighborhoods will be needed. If we want to allow, well, I'll have to, I said if we want to accommodate new residents in the village core rather than on rural acreages, but I think it'd be better to say, to give them the option of living in the village core rather than on rural acreages. Because we don't want to tell people they can't live in the rural acreage. We just want to make sure that there are options.
We sort of do want to tell them they can't.
Well, you guys do. I'm the only one that doesn't. Oh, and Sam.
I, I think that the language that you're proposing is kind of too vague to try and shoehorn in at this point, and that we have more specific language that expresses the same sentiment that's already in the plan. So it, it feels to me, I, I'm not sure what we're gaining by trying to get that sentence in there.
It just seems interesting to me that we opened up all this land, and it, it'd be interesting to see a, a graph of how quickly it filled up. But that's, that's too much to do at this point.
I think so. We also talk about housing studies.
And I'm pretty sure I presented that, that building permit data to you in lieu of an actual build-out analysis, just to kind of get your thinking, you know, straight around this topic before we delve into the details. So I can present that data again as you're going through your permutations.
Okay.
But it's a good thought.
Yeah, I think, I think we have it covered, though.
Anything else in the housing section?
Anything in, are you good?
Yeah, I did have a couple things in energy.
Okay, energy, go for it.
In a couple of places, we used high energy costs and rising energy costs as a reason for doing something, and that's not really the case anymore, right? Might be when the refineries are down in Texas, but it seemed to me that we could take out, like, the first. The second sentence in the chapter, as oil resources become more volatile, we don't really need that, because we don't know if they're volatile or not.
They'll always be volatile. I think that's pretty safe. I want to see where you are.
Yeah, it's the second sentence in the chapter, because now that we have fracking, they're very, very abundant, so even though the price might be volatile, the, the supply isn't. And then under trends, it says energy prices continue to increase, and then under affordability, it says energy costs have rapidly increased. So I don't think any of those things are necessarily still true.
It could be changed simply to unknown costs, or something like that, but I mean.
Those sentences could just be eliminated, and I think it'd be fine without them.
Under affordability, take out, energy costs have rapidly increased, and start, we must strive to reach our energy goals.
Well, yeah, also, the, well, the first one is okay.
Okay, so under affordability, what is the feeling on, energy costs have rapidly increased, to strike that?
Yeah, I'm in favor of that.
Okay. Barbara?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, okay, and then under trends, as energy prices continue to increase, why don't we just say, take that part out?
Or as energy prices remain volatile.
Can I say something rotten? I'm not trying to be rotten, but if we are at the point where we're kind of wordsmithing stuff, every change I make, I have to resend to the graphic designer, and he has to redo his stuff. So I really, like, I know that you guys went through all these sections three and four times really hardcore, and it feels, it feels, I don't know, it just kind of feels like we're, we're really playing with details at this point, you know? I'm just throwing that out there, take it or leave it, you know?
I'm pretty sure we've talked about this, though. I mean, I think some of the things we talked about just didn't make it in, like the FEH thing. I know that we talked about that.
And we have to think about how much these changes are going to actually make a difference in the document as a whole. Like, this is a discrepancy about whether oil prices are, are going to be volatile in the future.
Well, I think it, when we were talking a few months ago, they were, but it is a living, changing document, so it's like.
And we're going to redo this section probably next year?
Well, this reminds me of when we used to type on typewriters, and we would try to make changes that wouldn't change the size of the paragraph, because we had to glue it on. So taking out, energy costs have rapidly increased, will not increase, will not change the size of the paragraph, will not change the graphic design.
I'm just, I'm just having a perspective issue. I'm trying to keep perspective on this town plan thing as a whole, and I know that you guys have, like, gone through word by word over and over and over again. It just feels like we're back at the same place that we were a few weeks ago, and it's none of my business, but I'm just saying it anyway.
I would, I would suggest we strike the, in affordability, energy costs have rapidly increased, take that out and leave the rest as it is. I mean, the, I don't think it matters, I don't think it changes the overall feeling and the volatility pieces is there.
And for the most part, we're going and looking for typos and fractions, right?
Yeah, we're doing typos, stuff, yeah.
So that we'll have to go to the graphic designer.
Yeah, so maybe the graphic designing thing is a poor excuse. I just feel like.
No, I know what you mean.
Is there anything else in energy?
I just, unfortunately, need to go back to natural resources, because I've been trying to figure out how to incorporate Matt's suggestion about the wetland delineation, and in the process, in the goals, there's a numbering error.
Thank you.
Where we have three point two point twelve in the goals in the section, but three point two point eleven is the last one on the matrix.
Wait, which section?
It's back in, natural resources, sorry. And it's just that three point two point eight was not used as a number in the goals. And the reason I got there is because I think that one of the goals.
It took out.
Well, yeah, but what I'm getting at is that there should be one in the goals to refine wetland delineation maps in areas that we would like to see further growth.
So you would put in a three point two point eight and have it re.
Or three point two point twelve, however it gets.
Whatever it gets shifted, yeah.
Yeah.
Three point two point two kind of covers that, doesn't it? It doesn't give wetlands as an example, but it says, it could be.
Well, that's, that's about areas for conservation, which is pretty different than when you're trying to do, do development in certain areas. You end up with kind of arguments about what the actual wetland delineation is. And what he was doing is bringing that up as a kind of developer's point of view, in that in certain areas, it's just something that you can do to make it more attractive to do developments in certain places, which will encourage the development to happen in those places rather than others.
He was speaking of wetlands and floodplains?
Wetland and prime ag. It kind of falls on the same Act two fifty process. So, take it or leave it, but that's, I'm just trying to kind of incorporate his feedback, which I think is not a bad one in select areas where we would like to see growth. It's kind of, you know, when the town in the plan uses language like encourage, that is actually an action item that could encourage. So, and maybe that's, you know, too much to be bringing up at the end, but I thought that was a public comment that was worth consideration.
And I don't think it, and it's, I wouldn't look at it as a major change. I think it just is making it clear, because we talk about it, and we don't have it in the, in the changes, in the actions. So just.
What is kind of part of three point two point two?
Three point, identify and prioritize important areas of conservation, such as.
That's what Chris said, but you explained it.
Yeah, I guess I see it as being pretty distinct from three point two point two, in that three point two point two is focused on conservation, and this is not about conservation, it's about kind of where development can and cannot happen within, not within conservation zones, because it's like on certain parcels, you just.
And because.
It's just a slightly different perspective. I guess it's.
What would this, what would this map be?
It would be in areas like, for example, the EDI site, where we would like to see development. There would be some proactive mapping on delineating the actual wetland lines, which is kind of getting the Army Corps of Engineers and the state folks to kind of agree on what that line is, whereas the generalized map is, is often incorrect when you get down into the process of the Act two fifty process.
So that's part of a project development, that's part of what you do when you develop a project? And that's something that I would be picking up during the permitting process and asking for, and that can be in the zoning.
And so what I'm saying is that this, what this does is that it is proactive on the town's part in making it easier to do developments in certain areas, as, as a way to encourage growth in certain areas as opposed to others.
It's more directive.
And, yeah, it's, it's just, it's for consideration by everyone.
It's not something I would recommend, but you can put it in if you want, your planning permission. You know, wetland delineations are good for two years. You might be able to get the delineation done for free by the state. If there was an area that we, that we decided we wanted for development, then that would be part of that project development process to figure out if there's environmental contamination, if there's wetlands, is in the floodplain, like, you know, all those different things. And I don't think that that's, I don't think it's helpful to have it in the town plan for us to go out and proactively hire a wetland consultant to, to. for us to go out and proactively hire a wetland consultant to, to map different areas, especially because it's gonna change anyway.
Oh, so if it's only good for two years, then maybe it isn't...
I didn't know it was only good for two years.
I mean, that's just a rule of thumb, I mean, it's not written down, set in stone anywhere, but...
But it's, okay.
That makes sense.
I thought that once those lines were refined, that they were more, more or less kind of understood to be good. But I, I don't know a lot about it, so I trust you on that.
And which is also why you, you say you always direct people to the state anyways, because they have more up-to-date things than what we would have.
Yeah, it's part of that whole, like, savvy process that you use, like, with the development application, like, as you're, like...
In light of the misnumbering, just, these have to be renumbered?
But that doesn't mean that the conservation commission shouldn't be doing some sort of overall inventory of, of wetlands or fertile pools, like, just to have, to update our general mapping layers, knowing that an onsite delineation would be required closer to the time of construction, which I think is captured by 3.2.2, and I...
That's more my understanding of the intent of 3.2.2, yeah. Because that's about conservation. Okay, we'll leave it at renumbering, and go ahead.
So we're just gonna renumber?
Yeah.
You got that?
Yeah, totally.
Okay.
Do you want to add "Wetlands, Wildlife, and Seen at Quarters"?
Uh, I don't think it's necessary, but...
If we're looking at renumbering, Strategy 3.3 needs to be renumbered, too.
Which one?
It's the next 3.3, because it's a form.
3 has a 1, and then it has 2.2s.
Hmm, goes 3, 2, 2, 3, 4, 5, got it.
And, yeah, one of the 3.3.2s is not in the implementation matrix.
Oh, okay.
So renumber and check with implementation. Okay. Got it.
Are we up to transportation?
We are. Did you have more?
Nope.
Okay. Transportation, any in transportation? No? Education, simple typo, under facilities and enrollment. Instead of Mary Hogan once housed over sixty-three students, it should be six-hundred-thirty students. Close.
I'm sorry.
Did you get that?
Nope.
Okay.
The first page of education, and the last paragraph.
Under facilities and enrollment?
Oh, thank you, uh-huh.
Instead of sixty-three students, it's six-hundred-thirty?
Oh, gee.
Yeah, close. And then, at the top of the next page, it refers to the town recreation fields and facilities, and Mary Hogan leases the fields and shares them with the town. I believe that should now read, "And the Addison County Supervisory District," is that right?
Addison, A-C-S-D.
The A-C-S-D, is that right?
Yes, that is right.
Kathleen, is that?
Say that again.
"The school is adjacent to the town recreation fields and facilities, and Mary Hogan leases the fields and shares them with the town." Shouldn't it now be the school district?
So you're talking about the Mary Hogan Fields?
Yeah. Because now, Mary Hogan doesn't own anything, it's the school district. Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay, so that should, and I don't know if we have to write out... I think at this point, we can do A-C-S-D, because we referenced it before it. And then, under cost of education, we have, this is below, "Are the A-C-S-D per pupil fiscal year seventeen spending and rankings among Vermont School Districts?" And we have, we have spendings, we don't have rankings. And I asked Barbara to look, and you really can't find rankings right now?
It's complicated because of unifications and some districts having unified and some not. Everybody's tax rates are all over the place, because some people are getting ten cents off, and some people haven't done it, so they're getting nothing off.
So...
But the other thing up above is, it's not Addison County School District, it's Addison Central School District.
Oh, thank you, and the, in the parentheses. So, oh...
So just take out "and rankings"?
Yeah, just take out "and rankings."
Yeah, take out "and rankings." So just, and, and rankings among Vermont School Districts, I think you're just going per pupil costs. Just do that, okay?
So change spending to costs?
It says, "Below are the A-C-S-D per pupil fiscal year..."
Per pupil rates, or per pupil costs.
I guess per pupil costs, yeah, good.
For fiscal year seventeen, okay.
That's all I had on education. And colleges and institutions under Porter Medical Center. I think it should, I don't know where we put this. The last sentence I was gonna add is, "The new name, as of spring, or as of 2017, is University of Vermont Health Network Porter Medical Center." And up at the, so that should be added, and I don't know if Porter Medical Center, Porter Hospital, and Helen Porter Healthcare Rehab Center should instead read "University of Vermont Health Network Porter Medical Center." See what I'm saying? That happened after we read, wrote this.
Mm-hmm.
So...
In other words, we just need to get the name right.
Yeah.
Is that the name?
Yes.
Okay.
University of Vermont Health Network Porter Medical Center.
And then, how about the, the part in parentheses?
Porter Hospital, Helen Porter Healthcare and Rehab Center, and there's also the Urgent Center now, which is not in here, I just realized. But that's been added since we wrote this, too, that there's an urgent center.
Urgent Care Center.
I would keep it in the parentheses, which actually needs a second, an ending parentheses, and I would say, call it an, an urgent center. But I don't know the official name for that, so I think that should, I can check on that tomorrow, if that's okay with everybody on that. Yeah.
Oh, so then you see the last paragraph in that, the last sentence in that section, "In October 2016, the Board of Directors, blah, blah, blah."
And in 2017, it became University of Vermont Health Network Porter Medical Center. It's sort of backwards, frontwards, but it should be listed as the right name at the top, so...
PMC Express Care.
Say it again?
PMC Express Care.
Okay, so let's say, say Porter Medical Center, can you, how do you spell Express Care? Is it one word, two words?
It's one word, but the C is capitalized as well.
Okay, one-word express, got it.
Yeah, I can't even find their updated name on...
Did you hear that, Jen?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, one-word capital, kind of like Marble Works.
Yeah.
Or Bread Loaf, or whatever they are. Okay, thank you. I didn't have, all right, I don't have anything else under that. Anybody else? Section 10, Community Facilities and Services and Utilities. I think we left off the little airport section. That would, it was the updated, and it was with the runway expansion by the state.
You know, the library stuff has changed since we approved this, too, just like UVM has changed.
But it's gotta be constant. I mean, I'll say, we, nothing's changed yet, but it will change.
Right.
Yeah.
I think the library one is still actually accurate at this moment, so...
Just don't hold your breath for them.
But the...
I'm just reading something that says, "Using the grant, they've hired Gossens Bachmann to create a preliminary design and cost estimate. The work is expected to take place through summer 2017."
Didn't happen.
It did.
Oh, that part did, yes, I thought, "The work on the construction."
It says, "During the second half of 2017 and going forward, the library will be exploring options for financing construction of the proposed expansion," and that's accurate.
So can I, after Ilse Library, can I take out the word "has"? So it says, "Ilse Library hired Gossens Bachmann?"
Yes.
And then remove the sentence that, that begins with "this work is expected"?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I read that, and I think, I think we're good in that. But can, but what happened to the airport? There was one little airport.
No, we went back and forth in the airport several times. I don't have the red line in front of me, let's see. Oh, you're saying it's not in here at all?
No. And it's a facility, I think we just, I know it's, it was very simple, it was just, you know, regional airport and expansion of runway, period. I mean, that services, um...
Is it under transportation?
It must be, right? Maybe it's under transportation, you're right. Do you remember, Chris? It's under transportation?
It's hardly transportation.
No, I know.
Don't take it then as a transportation hub.
What are you looking for? The airport.
The airport.
I didn't see it.
Well, I think it used to be in transportation.
I think you're right. And I think we, I think we had it, and we couldn't, we weren't sure where we were putting... It doesn't change anything, it's...
We just want to make sure it's somewhere.
It's not under there. What the heck could it be?
I'm not seeing it there either.
And I'm not seeing it under the old section either. Is it under local economy? That doesn't make sense.
Well, I thought in the, when I was looking through different edits today, I saw a section on the airport, so I just put it back in the community facilities section.
I think it got just dropped, and there was no, there was no controversy, it was just a fact of what it is.
Right.
Is what it is, so I think, but that should be under Community Facilities, Services, and Utilities, I would think.
Thank you.
As opposed to transportation, don't you think? Okay. All right, anything else under Community Facilities? All right, land use?
Okay, land use, there is a correction on page five. At the end of the section, on downtown, it says, "Middlebury recently received funding through the Better Connections Grant." That didn't happen, right?
Right. At the end of page what? At the end of which page?
Okay, it's on page five of the land use section.
It's under downtown Middlebury, the, the last paragraph, right before Marble Works and Frog Hollow area.
Gotcha.
So I guess we just max, act that paragraph?
Littlebury recently applied for funding?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
The, the intent of that grant, we'd like to try again, so...
We want that desperately, exactly.
Applied for, but did not receive funding.
And will try again.
In fact, I could just say, "In 2000, whatever it was."
Sixteen.
I think it was sixteen, okay.
Good catch. Anything else?
Somewhere in here, I saw something about ACTR saying that if the hub should be relocated to South Pleasant Street, that could cause a problem for us if we don't want to do that. But where was it?
I didn't see that. I saw downtown. I saw downtown about three times.
Well, no, she's absolutely right, it's under C, Cross Street Bridge Bakery Lane area, third paragraph. The former Cross Forest Building should be demolished in the site planned for redevelopment, but town should consider relocating ACTR down to the hub.
Okay, good catch. So just cross off that last sentence.
The Cross Forest, I'm sorry, I just hate it, it should be considered an abandoned building.
Anything else? Chris, you good?
Mm-hmm.
Sarah? Sam?
Mm.
Barb? And then, the coordination, that, that looked really good. And then, just a few, the little changes in the, in the matrix numbering to coordinate with what we just picked up, yeah.
Do you want a motion to accept it with changes?
What?
Do, one, sorry, to be, to interrupt, but back on the Mary Hogan A-C-S-D piece, there's something about that sentence, Nancy, that still doesn't set right, give me, so I would like to, to do this. I think it's just a word or two.
Okay.
Check on it tomorrow.
Sure. Do you want to do a suggestion, or should we do it tomorrow?
No, I just want to check the lease arrangement between the town and the school.
Good idea, good idea.
It's just something major, won't change.
No, 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 no.
It's accuracy.
Yeah, it's just accuracy, we're doing fact, we're not changing the world here. Okay.
I have a comment, something I got.
Okay.
I'm just trying to fix my notes, sorry. I just noticed that in the energy section, that we were gonna put the consensus principles in the appendix and do that. Do we still want to do that?
Definitely.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, a lot of time was put into that.
Definitely, and we reference it in the energy section.
Yep.
So yes.
Okay.
Yes, definitely. Good catch on that. So, is there a motion to adopt, how do we say this?
I move to send this version of the town plan with revisions as discussed tonight to the Select Board for consideration.
I second it.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well done, I mean, this was, this was a big thing. A big thing for you, Jen, to come into and have to do right off the bat.
No kidding. Do you, do you want to do the municipal planning grant thing, just run these by us?
Oh, yeah, we have to talk about that, I just forgot.
This should be quick, I promise.
I'm sorry, was that a motion by Sam, seconded by Barbara?
Yes.
Then unanimous.
So... You want to do the municipal planning grant?
Yeah, I'm just thinking, just thinking how to bring that, so, yeah, municipal planning grant is coming up. It's due October, I think, October 8th, very beginning of October. And the Select Board, we need to pass an authorizing resolution, probably at Tuesday night's meeting. So we'd want to have some sort of proposal to them. Yeah, I know we talked about it a little bit before, we kind of danced around a few different ideas. And I was thinking, jeez, it might be nice to do something, you know, as we're, you know, we haven't had our retreat yet, and we haven't, like, really thought about how we want to jump into these goals and recommendations we've created for ourselves. So there's a lot of, like, planning projects on the horizon, but we're not really sure which one we're doing first. So rather than trying to advance a planning project now, especially knowing that we have the train station to work on, I was wondering if we might want to just do something really simple for the municipal planning grant, you know, maybe asking for money to design something in the downtown area. Um, you know, maybe, um, asking for, um, money to design something in the downtown area. And that way it could be followed up with, uh, with a transportation grant potentially in the future, which would give us implementation funds to implement the thing we designed and just kind of do something small and easy. I say small and easy, nothing's ever small and easy, but. Um, and I got thinking about Seymour Street, what with the, um, the demo project that we just did. Um, I'd been looking over the survey results from the demo project and people were kind of so-so about the Marble Works thing, but it did seem like like even the negative comments about Seymour Street acknowledged the fact that it was working in terms of traffic calming to have those boxes out in Seymour slowing people down. So one thought is to apply for money to design, um, streetscape improvements on Seymour Street between Greg's Market and the Congo Church. And that would dovetail with the demo project we just did. It would also dovetail with improvements to be completed after the railroad projects, like the burial of the overhead utilities and the, the sidewalk section.
And it might dovetail with the train station.
Yeah, that too.
And it's nothing that we would ever have to undo or think about when we're doing other parts
Mm-hmm.
of, of design work or, um.
Yeah. I mean, unless, um, when I completely, I, I wasn't here today, so I didn't have a chance to, um, to get with Kathleen about, um, Printers Alley or Triangle Park and if those might be better projects given, um, given the funding we have for those, I don't know.
My understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong because I don't know, but my understanding was that there were funds going into the Triangle Park rehabilitation through the railroad project already. But is it our responsibility to design it, is you're, you're saying, or?
Yeah, I'm, I'm really not clear on.
I think the, that there is, needs to be some community input into the landscape design.
Yeah.
Of the Triangle Park.
Yeah.
There is, we received, uh, downtown transportation and has some grant funding of a hundred thousand dollars for those improvements.
Right.
Just as a general request for lighting.
Yeah.
Other amenities.
Yeah.
So doesn't it, does it make more sense then to instead do Seymour Street, which could be more timely now? And that we have, we know we have the hundred thousand for, for Triangle Park and we will have input, but to do planning, knowing we have four years?
I like the idea of Seymour Street.
Of that. I mean, it just makes, I think it makes sense.
Did the Public Works people agree that was a good idea?
Public Works has not met since, um, or the Public Works.
Yeah, I mean, they were on the committee. Bill and Dan were on, on the little committee for the pop-up project. And I don't think we've had a.
We haven't debriefed.
A debriefing yet, so we would want to know that they think it's an all right thing to do.
If Dan and Bill are on board. And Kathleen's on board with it too, I would think that that's a, a really good idea to continue. I mean, we were, it's following up on, on work that was already started and it's something that has to be done and it's not going to be in the way of the railroad things. I mean, it's just going to enhance it. I would think that would be a really positive.
I like the idea of using the demonstration and continuing the momentum in the same location. I think the follow-through is a good idea.
And I would think it would be helpful for municipal planning grant acceptance too.
And.
Chris has raised a good point though about how this, you know, overlaps with, with infrastructure and and I don't, I, I would hate to, um, go in front of the select board and need an authorizing resolution that night. And then hear that we needed to actually go in front of the infrastructure committee first, because then that would compromise our timing and we wouldn't have any proposal at all.
Well, if you checked with Susan and Dan, they might be able to just tell you if you need to go to the infrastructure committee. Or, um, you know, ask Dan if he thinks it's, you know, it worked.
Yeah.
So the select board could pass the resolution at its meeting on September twenty-sixth.
Okay.
Which would be after the infrastructure committee.
Oh, that's a good idea.
We could introduce the concept at the meeting on the twelfth, um, with the intent of going to Public Works, Infrastructure on the fourteenth, and then back to select board on the twenty-sixth with the authorizing resolution.
Oh, that makes a lot, that makes nice sense. That works. Does that work for you, Jen?
Yep. And I don't mean to, I don't mean, I don't want to lead your thinking and I don't want to complicate things, you know, I just like, uh, but there were other ideas that came out through the course of the year, like one was a housing study. Um, but housing study is kind of hard at this point because we, I don't, we haven't had enough conversations about what the scope of that study would be.
Yeah.
Or the geographical reach.
And we really want to get all those housing people together, uh, before we.
Yeah.
And we don't have time to do that by the time you need to have this in.
Yeah.
Yeah, given everything else, having something relatively
Simple.
Not contentious, uh, and straightforward, I think is a great idea.
Yeah. Um, would somebody like to move that, Jen, follow up with that, uh, with the select board and infrastructure committee to check on it?
So moved.
So move, make the wording sound a little better, please. Sarah's second.
Jen, check on it, okay.
Sarah checked, Sarah's seconding it. So. You, you know, you know what we meant.
Uh-huh.
It's clear, right? We're late.
Like, if it's okay with them, it's okay with you.
Yes.
Okay.
One hundred percent. Yeah, we all want to be on the same page in this, this, yeah, perfect. That would be perfect. All right, so any other discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay, is there any others business that you need to do? Jen?
Probably. I can't think of anything right now, though.
Oh, shucks. In that case, is there a move to adjourn? Thank you.
Second.
Okay.
Our next meeting is just.
The twenty-first.
And that's the one that might be the college.
It might be the college, it might be the zoning. We, um, we haven't heard yet from.
But we have a retreat.
Right? Well, our retreat is the twenty-eighth. And we'll talk about that on the twenty-first.
Okay.
But yeah, retreat's on the twenty-eighth.
Four P M.
Four P M, right. Thank you. Good job, everybody.
Yeah.